And that being said, who are we hurting for? Scott, you're up in 11.
I'm here.
Well, wonderful.
Are Ryan and Dan still muted?
Dean is the only one. Dan is the only one I see muted and Ryan.
Oh, he could, he could be muting himself. Are you muting yourself, Dan? There you go.
All right, we're all, we're all live now.
Beautiful.
Everybody's there.
I think we're all accounted for there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's, let's open this meeting, bring it to order. Somebody could put up a facsimile of a flag.
That's usually Tia.
Yeah, I don't have mine ready to go today.
Oh, all right. Usually it's on top of things.
I know, but it's been busy today.
All right, you get a pass.
There we go.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which stands
a nation indivisible, liberty, justice, and
Well, I think we have the minutes of October 28th and the minutes of November 11th to approve tonight. We've certainly got plenty of warm bodies, so we should be able to do it.
Yeah, and Dean, just for some corrections, if we can make sure that people's last names are included.
Yeah.
That's consistent through both of them.
Very good. It seems like sometimes you go by last name, sometimes you go by first name. It's just confusing.
Yep.
Almost getting to the point that we have some meetings, apparently we don't even talk. Getting about time to run a new ad in the paper.
I love Zoom.
Don't worry about it, Joe. That's what I get all day.
At least he had shorts on.
Yeah, at least it wasn't somebody scratching their big fat belly and repair boxes. Get that out of your mind. Any corrections that you can think of with these meetings, minutes, anybody?
Which one you doing first?
Uh, let's do the 11th. Let's now, let's back up and do October 28th first.
Yeah, so just the last names throughout the, the minutes. There's multiple cases of that, just to clarify who's, who's actually speaking.
Yes. Anyone else? Bill, you look like you're scratching your head.
I think that was a meeting I missed most of, so if you got enough to approve without me, I'll, not vote.
I saw nothing drastic at all, other than very limited, very cryptic. That's an entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from October 28th.
Well, second it.
And all those in favor and Tia?
Yes.
Bill?
Uh, abstained.
Heidi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I will. Who am I missing?
Uh, Ryan.
Well, he made the motion. I'm seconded.
I haven't got my paper list made tonight because I spent all my time trying to get logged in.
I'll be better.
I'm gonna keep saying that till somebody fixes it. We're going backwards.
Yes, I know. I apologize. I'll try to work on it.
Okay, let's look at the minutes for November 11th, which you should have in your packet this way. Any comments?
Probably the same comment about the first and last names.
Definitely.
Other than that, I didn't see anything standing out.
Anyone else? I would entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, November 11th.
And I'll second that. Dan?
Yes.
Scott?
Abstained.
Brian?
Abstained.
Bill?
Yes.
Tia?
Abstained.
Heidi? And I will okay them. Hopefully we've got enough.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Any projects of regional impact?
No, sir.
Very good. This is not a public meeting.
No.
It's just other business.
Yep.
And we're here all bright and bushy tailed and in wonderful moods to, for zoning changes, building, draft building code, housing ordinance and citation ordinance.
So the document that was sent out is the most recent version of that document that we talked about at our last meeting. I know the subcommittee has been meeting on it since then. There's been some changes made based on input from the group. And I guess at this point I'll, I'll turn it over to Joe to review on, on the most up to date version and we can chat about it and see what you want to do.
Thanks, Mark. So basically, I presented you guys last month to kind of give you an idea where we're at. The copies that you have right now or the copies that have come out of the group, the board of selectmen have seen it and they have now passed it on to the planning board for review as well. So I'm willing to entertain questions, whatever you guys want on the ordinances.
Joe, on our committee, are we mostly down to the fee structure piece?
We are pretty much, that's where we're at now is on the fee structure piece. And I sent an email out to the group today. Just kind of showing you some of the surrounding communities. I know, just so the planning board is aware, the committee has kind of looked at a application fee and then price per foot for the, for the permits. It's kind of the way they want to go. So that is what we're looking at for a model, which is what I passed out to the working group today.
So Joe, has any changes been made since we received the material in our packet?
No. That's, that's the, the most recent copy that you guys have is the copy that went through the board of selectmen. So there's no change after that.
We can make changes though, as the planning board, if we so choose to tonight, correct?
You can make changes. We would refer it back down to the selectmen so they can also see any changes. Because obviously when we go to the warrant, we're going to want that the board of selectmen recommend this and the planning board recommend this. So both bodies are going to want to have a bite at the apple out of it.
So Joe, what is the time scheduled for you, for the committee to, I guess, review those potential fee structures? So we can take a look at that as it's incorporated into this, this draft.
So the working, the, the group is meeting on Friday again. And like I said, that's what we're pretty much love to really tackle. And I think that's the plan for Friday is try to get a, a fee schedule set up. You know, I'm assuming we're going to probably per foot and the application fees range between 50 and 100.
I have a question. I've been kind of out of the loop with things, just reading it remotely. I've got a couple of things on page seven I'd just like to talk about with the committee. They're talking about at the top, application for the permit, that it goes to the, you know, code official and then additional copies go on to the building, planning and zoning departments. We've never in the past ever really is a, a planning department. We, we've worked on what we're doing now, but we've never really been part of that process. It's always been strictly the building inspector. So I'm concerned about the timeframe, if it does have to come through to the zoning or planning department.
So when we're referencing the planning department, that's going to be Mark. That's not going to be the planning board.
Okay, okay.
We're talking about that specific department.
Okay.
So if there's, if there's things that Mark need to look, needs to look at from the zoning standpoint specifically.
Oh, all right. I'm fine with that. The, the second issue that I do have that I really would like to discuss and possibly change, the second paragraph, permit within 30 days. That is an awfully long time to hold a builder up. I could see myself saying, screw it, I'll pay the fine. I mean, I think 30 days in a small town is kind of crazy considering most of our projects are residential. I mean, we're not talking like putting up hotels and, you know, huge structures in Boston. I mean, we're talking a guy wants to build a deck or somebody wants to put an addition on. I think 30 day waiting time for the review of a building permit. If we have an inspector that I'm hoping we're going to have, that's going to be available and accessible. There's no way it should take 30 days. I think that should be trimmed to two weeks.
So I, the reason we use the 30 day mark is because that's what the state IRS say calls for, which is why we use that as a date range.
Well.
The state's already called out how long we have to issue a permit.
But we can, we can supersede state. Correct?
Yeah, yep.
I, I would like to, I would like to supersede state because I had a situation this fall that you were aware of, Joe. Trying to get some inspections when Kyle was on his way out and trying to get a gas inspection. And you and I had the blunt conversation in town hall about, you know, being told, well, we got, you know, 30 days to do it. So you only gave us a week and a half notice. So too bad. I'm just trying to eliminate the builder and the customer, you know, trying to get an occupancy permit and getting that thrown back at you. I really think we need to tighten that up and supersede state.
I agree completely with that. I work in a number of different communities and I know that some of them have the 30 day time, timeframe and all the builders say we just pay the fine, going for it.
You know, I, I just think that's totally unreasonable. Bill, do you, do you have some input with that?
Well, yeah, I had that circled. I don't know how I didn't catch it in our meetings, Joe, but I had that circled on my paper here for discussion also. And yeah, I, I think especially with a small town, we could bring that down. Does the, will these permits also go to the board of selectmen like they, I think they used to, didn't they?
Well, they, they used to. We haven't seen a building permit in a very long time, which is another issue.
So.
Area of concern.
I guess what I don't understand is the, the flow chart of a building permit from when it's submitted to when it's approved.
Yeah, so the, the approval in the past has been whoever signs off on it at the town hall level. And then we get a list documenting what permits have been issued for us to then sign off on so that we're aware of them. And anything that is in question, then you know, at the town level can come to us direct.
So does a builder have to wait until the board of selectmen gives their okay?
It hasn't been like that in the past.
I think it's like, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong. Is that the way it is in Hopkinton?
Uh, I don't think the selectmen in Hopkinton have to do it, Bill, but I'm not sure. But you know, I've never waited in Hopkinton where I do a decent amount of work. I've never made, waited more than a week or 10 days for a permit.
I remember filling one out over there. Not last year, the year before. And they said, uh, the board is meeting like tomorrow night. So if you can get this in real quick, they can approve it then. So that was, that was the pro, back then it was process over there.
I, I do remember that years back, but it seems like in recent years, a couple of permits last year, you bring them into Karen and Karen gets with John and, you know, you're all set.
Okay.
Again, I just, that, that's the one thing that I've got highlighted that really jumped out that I feel is unreasonable. Because, you know, most of the time, the fire department, the police and water sewer, everybody's, you know, working with you. And typically within a week, you've got a permit. I just don't want to have them, you know, throwing up an attitude with, hey, I've got 30 days. Don't push me. Because when you get into that, same thing with getting occupancy permits and that. You, you can't wait, you know, three weeks for a final inspection to get an occupancy permit.
The selectman approval isn't in here, is it, Joe? I don't see it.
I don't think it is in there, no.
No. I mean, that's, that's unusual. I've seen sometimes they, some communities, but this was years ago, they would post playing, uh, building permits for a week. I never understood why. I guess for people to be able to complain about something and, but that was, that's the only time I've ever seen the selectmen involved. Selectmen would post permits.
Yeah, we, we used to get a report on our consent agenda with a list of permits that had been filed and approved. So we then could sign off that we were made aware of them.
So not really a decision-making process?
Correct.
That you know what's happening and they've already been approved. That's kind of a courtesy to the board.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, that's just a FYI versus having to wait for the board to make a motion and vote. So, I mean, that's simple. Yeah.
So do we need to vote to make a change or do we just make a recommendation to the committee? Seems to me that if you just made a recommendation, a list of recommendations, if it comes back to us and we were ignored, well, then we'll just drop this ball. I mean, I, I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
We don't endorse it unless you make the change.
But it, it, well, I mean, you're, you're poking, you just ripped a scab off a wound because you ought to try to file for an intent to cut on a woodlot if you want to sit around and wait. And you go to one town and they say, listen, dear, if you can take this over to this address and get the selectmen to sign it and then take it here and get the other selectmen to sign it, we'll put it through the meeting tonight and you can start Wednesday. And it's the idea of, as far as I'm concerned, government just getting in your way with this and it, that's my opinion.
Well, that's some, um, I think, Joe, Heidi, in our meeting Friday, we could bring this up. I feel a little remiss that I didn't catch that earlier in the, in the meeting and I probably would have fought for it during our regular meetings and it might have been changed then. But with the, with the team there on Friday, I think we could kick it around real fast and, and, and see what's realistic.
I don't think it's reasonable. And if we have the protocols in place, there's no reason it can't be carried out.
I mean, I, I agree with Scott. Most, most of the permits we get are very simple. I mean, we get a flyer every so often where, you know, at Mitchie or something that's a little bit more complicated or HHP, but 90% of the permits are pretty simple stuff.
So it's more of an up to, two weeks or something. It's not necessarily, we're going to take two weeks because we feel like it. If it's something simple, it's going to go through pretty quickly. Reasonableness.
The, the other one thing that I noticed, I don't have what page it is labeled, that the building permit would be good for a period of two years and then they could go in and reapply to extend it for a year. Every town I've ever worked in, it's usually good for one year and then they'll give a one-year extension. Because I mean, people could be dragging this out, you know, in a residential neighborhood for three years with one extension.
So our original draft had the one year. The group is the one who decided to make it the two years.
Just, just concerned if there's pushback in a neighborhood or something that, you know, somebody's building their own house and it takes them three years to get it done. It's kind of an ISO to be living next to. I mean, one year is a fairly reasonable timeframe if anybody's building it, you know, we're not, again, it's a house. It's not a, you know, hotel or a warehouse.
I think the thought process with that was to just be a little bit more open to people who might run into something.
I've seen, I've seen situations where, you know, if it's an insurance case, you know, my neighbor had a fire and good God, um, that poor bastard was probably building for a year and a half. You know, they were, they were releasing funds at a dribble and just took forever.
Well, it's not a stumbling block for me. It's just something that dealing with a lot of different towns over the years, it's, that stuck out to me. It's not a, not a big deal.
It's not something that can't be changed in the future if it did become a problem.
Yeah.
And usually the, the bank that's holding the mortgage or the, or the building loan or the, is usually hot to trot on getting you to finish up anyway. I would expect more flack from the, the bank than I would the town. Yeah, typically the construction alone and that is one year. Yeah. So I mean, you're kind of, all I can say, it's a good thing I'm hidden in the woods because I'm still not done. Don't you laugh, Scott. But it,
It wasn't built in a day, Dean.
Yeah, I know it. I know it. And I'm getting slower by the minute. Anything else we ought to discuss at this point? It still seems like we have quite a bit out that we, we don't have to look at to make our minds up here and clock's running. I mean, Santa's coming pretty soon.
They'll have the opportunity to discuss it again once the fee structure is finalized too, correct?
Well, I was just going to ask you about schedule. So under statute, we have to post this change no later than January 7th and hold our meeting no later than January 18th for a first hearing. We're meeting in January the 13th, so that's fine. And if we have to, say we have a public hearing on the 13th and we make changes that are substantive, we can have another meeting on the 27th because the final language is required to be at the clerk, no labor, no later than February 2nd. So I wanted to ask the board tonight, you know, our next meeting would be the 23rd, two days before Christmas, if that's, if you, if you want to meet again before we send it to a public hearing.
I can meet during that time.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
And if we read it ahead of time, we should be prepared.
Right.
I can also.
It would, the next version you'd get would have any changes that the committee deals with this Friday. It would hopefully include that 14 days. Give it one more perusal. We posted and have, we have two opportunities, two meetings in January if needed to deal with any, deal with it. And then we gotta make a, or make, make a decision to put it on the ballot and then get it to the clerk's office.
And then educate the public.
Well, right.
So I just have a quick question on the housing standards portion, Joe.
Yeah.
So I know we've had some issues with some of our rental properties. And one of the exemptions, let's see, where is it? Come on. So one of the exemptions exempt units, so I understand, you know, owner occupied, single or family, but it says non-owner occupied dwelling units.
If.
Where, where are you at?
Or, or being or dwellings which are being renovated. So would this apply to those apartment buildings if there's nobody in them because the college students have left?
No, I think.
Section five exemptions, I think. Page eight.
Thank you.
That's what you're referring to, right, Tia? Yeah.
Because we seem to have a lot of problems even over the summer with those facilities.
Well, I think I read that as if it's being renovated with a legal building permit, there's going to be stuff going on anyway. So yeah, that, that's, that is how the exemption reads. We can definitely look at that.
I would look at it because they, you know, they really need to comply with having a clean space, especially within certain area, like it, it's not like there's nobody around, you know, and we've seen some cases in the past where there hasn't been a clean, safe space during those renovations.
Is this called under exemptions though?
It says exempt units.
Exempt, these are exempt units, all non-owner occupied dwelling units which are condemned or uninhabitable.
Or, or yet for human occupancy or dwellings which are being renovated.
Which are being renovated. And if they're being renovated, they're going to need.
I would, I would, I would take another look at that.
But see, I read that as the dwelling unit itself. So if we have a three family, the building itself isn't exempt. The dwelling unit that they're working in would be exempt.
It's uninhabited because there, there's no students there for the summer. They're not exempt. It has to be uninhabitable, like condemned. So if, if a building's empty because all the students left and it's in violation.
So I would, I would change that word or so as uninhabitable for human occupancy and dwellings which are being renovated.
Maybe you do and or. Are you concerned about a vacant unit, Tia?
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned over what we saw this past summer.
Everyone's thoughts on that?
Elaborate on this past summer. Were they uninhabitable? Were they being renovated?
They, they were being, they were being renovated and it was, and Scott can attest to it, that, you know, when you have stairwells that are being blocked and everything else like that, you know, that becomes a serious issue.
Uninhabitable.
There's nobody in them though. The stair, were the stairwells being blocked because they were being worked on?
Well, there was stuff outside that indicated they were being worked on, but we don't know. But you, regardless, you can't you know, block stairwells in a multi-unit building if there was any, even if it's not being inhabited. That's a safety risk.
I, I believe the life safety code speaks to if, we'll use the school as an example. When the school is not in session, they can, they block doors and they, and they can block them because it's not being used for its intended purpose. I would, I would assume a multifamily would be very similar. If that building is completely empty and they're renovating and doing work, they're not falling under that same life safety where the staircases need to be. Because the expectation is nobody's in the building.
But at that time, does it have to be considered uninhabitable until that work is completed? Is that kind of?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
I think the biggest issue we've been faced with is a, a lot of construction and renovation going on in a lot of our commercial buildings just simply without permits. And I don't know, is that's lack of building inspector around town or eyes on it or just out of state landlords doing as they please and deal with it when they get caught.
And the exemption is just from the housing ordinance part of this, if I'm reading it right, Joe, not the code enforcement for building codes.
That's correct.
Yeah, so you know, are they going to need working smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors if they're in, under the process of renovation? Well, not until they get their inspection, not until they're done and get their inspection.
Yep.
So, yeah, I think, I think what the unintended consequence of changing that would be that you would handcuff contractors to the point where they wouldn't be able to work on the place.
That, that's not what I'm trying to do, Bill. What I'm trying to do is make sure that we're not in a situation where we have some of the issues that we've experienced in the past continue to a point where yeah, there's going to be fines issued and everything else, but I don't want them to be able to come back and say that they're exempt from complying with certain things like I think that's why we were so strong even after the shooting on getting inspections done, right? So, and this is kind of where this is coming from.
Well, that was occupied. Obviously occupied building. It wasn't under renovation, wasn't, then fallen into this category.
But will some of these questions come up when they apply for the permit to do these renovations with that then at that time decide? Would that then at that time decide whether it be inhabitable or not during the process?
I mean, just because you're renovating a place doesn't mean it's uninhabitable. I mean, I think that's.
Not in every case, but occasionally.
Yeah. Oh, if you take out your bathrooms, technically the building's uninhabitable at that point.
Oh, no, it did one at a time. We could still inhabit, right?
But said, but then, but then it's, but then if you have a multifamily and they still have people in there, it's habitable. Even though they're doing one unit at a time. So I think the, this ordinance would still come into play at that point because they still are inhabiting the building.
As long as there aren't safety violations. Like a blocked staircase or?
Well, if there's people living in there, they can't block the staircase anyway. You know, I, I'm thinking uninhabitable or, you know, if we're doing a renovation and the entire building's empty, that's a lot different than doing it unit by unit.
Well, a little bit of difference too now is, you know, if this all goes into implementation, we're talking about having someone to inspect throughout the process. I think with these other things, some of these things were unpermitted, unknown. And there was no inspection going on during the process. Therefore, then you discover things like blocked staircases and inhabitants in the building and other things that may not occur with more protocols in place.
Joe, have you and the board been talking about potentially what hours or how many hours a week we would be employing someone to fill this position?
So the budget right now and the board's still going back and forth a little bit on that. Right now it's budgeted for at least 18 to 20 hours a week.
And are we gonna pay them a respectable wage? That seemingly has been the problem with most of our inspectors. They can make far better money working on their own than working for the town.
We have a budget at $30 an hour.
I think that's a big step up from what it used to be.
Yep.
Tia?
Oh, it's definitely a big step up and the use of technology needs to come in play here at some point. And making sure that, you know, permits and approvals are being emailed not only to the person who's paying for the project, but also to the builder and to also the town hall so we can loop it into the whole packet.
That's what's been happening over the last six months or years with, with the land use permits now. So, you know, I sign off on permits almost every day and I'm not in town hall. So that's, that's already teed up and should continue obviously with a billing permit. You know. Everything should be submitted electronically.
I agree.
And, and approvals granted and sent out. So we know that it's been inspected.
Yeah, you can, you can do writable PDFs and, you know, it's.
Well, you, there's software too, like I use DocuSign all the time and that is so simple to program it in.
Any other topics? I've got a quick question on page four.
Which doc Dean?
Pardon?
Which, which one?
The housing standards or the other one?
Well, it's page four from the beginning of the document that we were given.
There's two documents though Dean.
It's basically a permit not required.
That's on the building side. That's on the building code.
It's section 10, page three, I believe.
You want to build an oil Derek, don't you?
Yeah. You know, it might be my annuity, but you know, I really don't think that needs to be in there. I mean, I personally don't see why this whole section can't be eliminated and covered by a $5,000 rule. But I, I don't think I have a majority, so I won't bring it up, but I'll die with it.
We had this.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I think the $5,000 rule, I think that is going to be a huge hurdle. I, you know, as a, as a homeowner myself and a single homeowner, that $5,000, you know, if you want to do a project, it was easy to do a project under that amount. It's, you know, especially with who I have relatives being in the building trade. But, you know, that's going to be your biggest hurdle in passing this altogether.
Problem is it's unenforcement.
It's, it's, it's also not legal.
Well, that, you know, the P28 was supposed to be catching some of this and your good respectable builders are going to get a permit regardless of the cost, so.
No, but your property owners filling out the P28, the ones that want to escape the tax are not going to tell you what they're doing.
Right.
They're probably the same people that aren't going to get a permit unless you can see them. Not going to change some of that.
But with the adoption of this, we have the teeth and the, the enforcement mechanism, which by adopting this, I don't think that $5,000 clause is, is applicable anymore.
The way this is going to be worded um, on the ballot is it's going to be remove and replace.
So if it's like kind with like kind, then it's not required.
If you don't go outside of your footprint.
Right.
Or if it's not interfering with electrical or anything else, right?
Well, if it's the um, utilities, you, you, you still have to uh conform there. The, the list that I think Dean started talking us about that is just a bunch of examples. Um, it's there to kind of help, help people read through and say, oh, I, I'm gonna do a swing set. I, I guess I don't have to come down um, and get a building permit, things like that. It's not limited to this, but.
It, just as a quick comment, you know, this is a, this is a swing year. You just got reevaluated. You either got hit hard or you didn't. Everybody just, my taxes went from X amount a year to a thousand dollars more per year. It didn't trickle up through that. It just took one big step. And when you give people a document, if they do read it and there's a bunch of crap in there that doesn't even pertain to what it is, their eyebrows go up. So guys, you can argue this until this, you know, until the sun comes up. But it's either gonna pass or it won't. And it's either good enough to pass or it'll fall on its face. And um, you know, who, who recommends it and who supports it is not going to matter. And I think it's going to be a tough go.
Well, if we, if we point out to people that without having a building code and enforcement mechanisms, there's tax money being uh, left on the table. There's, you, you got people who are getting away with a lot of stuff and you're picking it up because you're paying your property tax and they're not paying theirs on the improvements they made.
Right.
Um, I don't, you, you know, I see that as a, a patently unfair system. So there's a selling point for people who are worried about, is this fair or not?
Well, at that point, Bill, it's your time to bring this up at the public meeting.
Well, I mean, it wouldn't, I mean, if you're sitting there listening. What would somebody be arguing? I don't want to pay more taxes. I would agree with that person. I would say, what about your neighbor who put up a big addition and didn't pay any tax on it? You think, you think that was fair that you're picking up their, their portion of the tax bill?
I just sold a house in the west end of Concord and the previous property owner converted a two-car garage in the back that the city could not see into living space. He decided to fess up when he wanted to sell his house as a four-bedroom. And who picked up the extra taxes? The new owner. Because he took a pass for like eight years of not paying the true value on his house. So people are shifting the value to their neighbor and their neighbors picking up. That's why I'm an advocate of value, revaluating in the town because you're never going to get everybody to be honest about this stuff.
Well, even with this though, and let's be clear about it, even with this, you're still going to have those people who aren't telling you the truth. They're still not going to tell you the truth on this one.
If they understand, it goes back to education. They have to understand how this works for them, not just how it works against them in their mindset.
I had a conversation with Bill the other day and we were talking about the uh tough sell and it's definitely going to have to be sold to people. And we also, time back, had discussed that $5,000 rule, which again has been a huge sticking point. I mean, of, I've been in town, Bill, you've been here quite a while, Heidi, Tia. I mean, we've, we've watched this become a battle in town for the last 15, 20 years with that $5,000 rule. And uh, I, I think that is going to be a tough sell to get people by. And as Bill said, it definitely needs to be sold to people. I'm wondering if we need to have somewhat of a default plan because if this doesn't fly at town meeting in March, we now have another year of, you know, building the west.
Joe, what part of the $5,000 rule, you said it's not legal to put that in there?
Well, the code specific, specifically tells you when you need a permit and when you don't need a permit. Um, so when you read the IRC, the IBC, the plumbing, electrical, mechanical, it specifically tells you when that permit has to be pulled. Now, it doesn't say a fee structure, so it doesn't say how much they have to pay for it. It could be a free permit. There's really no, you know, you could do something like, you know, if you want, we'll use the $5,000. You can say your first $5,000 of a permit are free. I mean, you can look at it that way too, but the permit is still required. That, that's the piece we can't get around.
But the mentality of the public is too, they'll tell you, everything I did was under $5,000.
Well, yeah.
Well, if you're the homeowner and you're doing the work or, you know, your father's a builder, yeah, it's under $5,000.
Well, no, that was for materials only, I believe.
Right.
Wasn't it Scott? So it doesn't matter who, doesn't matter if you're a carp- carpenter doing your own work. There's, I mean, material costs are material costs.
Car garage with, with free bays and.
But at least, at least if you're making them still pull the permit, it may still get caught. You know, if you, if you did put some sort of, you know, cap that says, you know, we'll use the $5,000 again and say you, under 5,000, you have to pull a permit, but there's no fee for the permit. When that building inspector is looking at it, he looks at the job. If he's a, he's a, he's a good inspector, he's going to say, this is way more than $5,000. What are you talking about? And you can kind of catch it that way too.
Yeah, but the problem from the taxpayer standpoint is they see this whole premise as more taxation and they're going to wait at all costs. They don't want to be checked on because they don't want to pay more money. You're going to get some that are honest all the time and you're going to get others that are going to skirt it all the time. But again, without this, we have no teeth to go after that.
The, the bad news is we've been a year now without an inspector per se and we go another year without an inspector. I mean, people are paying a premium to live in this town. I mean, with what taxes are. And they do deserve to have someone oversee the project to make sure it's, you know, sustainable of what it should be for what they're paying for it.
Well, and if it isn't, Scott, you know, because you build and it does what I do, that it bites them on the other end. It's like not backing up your computer. You don't realize it till it crashes. Go to sell your house and you don't meet some of this criteria, you end up paying for it later. Goes back to the education of the public.
Right, but if you do have a reputable builder, they're going to be following this regardless of whatever is in place.
Right, that's true. But not everybody hires a builder and there's a lot of stuff out there that's not.
Right, but regardless, people are still going to hire those people that are not qualified. You know, it's buyer beware and as, you know, individuals, we all have to take our own independent responsibility of vetting who we're hiring.
That is true.
Yes, you do with the job. Uh, and this is, this is where I see a huge benefit for the average homeowner who's not in the building business, doesn't know much about it, doesn't know how high his, his deck rails need to be or how far apart the balancers. And it just really looks nice. Uh, until uh, you know, somebody gets hurt on it and the insurance company says, well, it's not built to code. Or they go to sell it and uh, you know, they got a, the whole, the whole system's not, not built to code, whatever. So this is a protection system for the, the homeowner who's having the work done. I've, I've said this a hundred times. I'm not one for government oversight and overreach. However, I see this as a uh, a protection for not only homeowners who just don't know the business, but also contractors who do know the business and uh, get undercut by those coming in who don't. So uh, I, it's a win-win on, on that point. And as far as taxation, people are going to say, oh, now I have to build, get a building permit, it's going to cost. Well, we're, we're going to have a fee schedule. I haven't even talked about the fee schedule yet. But I can't. I mean, I think it's expected by almost everybody these days that you go to a town, you want to build something, you got to get a building permit. Excuse me. And it's going to cost you something. If it's outrageous, then people are going to moan and groan. And uh, if it's fair, everybody's going to look at it and go, okay, all right. Next.
How do you do in business?
Going back to what is our plan B, Joe, if this falls on its face in March?
I mean, the problem we run into is without adopting RSA 67451, we have no enforcement. We can't enforce the building code, so we can't do anything with the building code. And that's, and that's where we're at unfortunately.
And the greater thing is we can't enforce the housing code. And I, as a realtor will tell you, there are people in this town buying up property. I don't quite understand why with the, the phase that the college is at. Hand over fist for multifamilies. They're all over multifamilies and we need to be able to have some jurisdiction over that.
Now, Scott, as far as if we're talking about a multifamily or a commercial property, um, the Board of Selectmen has, have, in the, I believe was the, either the first meeting in November, or there was, probably the last meeting in October, authorized me to utilize the Fire Marshal's Office for inspections on any commercial properties and any multifamilies. Obviously, they're not allowed to do one or two family houses, um, so they won't touch those. But if we have inspections that have to happen on any multifamilies or commercials, or just commercial industrial developments that happen in town, we can at least get those inspected to the Fire Marshal's Office if for some reason it's bad.
But in the meantime, the single-family resident builder or remodeler has to, you know, do appointments through the Fire Marshal because we have no one in town that'll do a gas inspection.
That is correct.
A separate fee, a couple of weeks to get it inspected for a rougher finish. So if you've got open walls with gas piping for a gas fireplace or a stove in the kitchen, you, you can't cover it up, let's inspect it and pressure test it. And it just slows the wheels of time. I mean, the job comes to a stop waiting on the Fire Marshal. You already paid a permit fee in Henniker, now you're paying another permit fee for the state.
There's your sale right there, Scott. I think if, if Joe average homeowner heard that, just that little tiny story right there, they would go, I had no idea. That, that is not right. Uh, it's, it's common sense for a lot of this stuff. Once you point out the examples and, and the hurdles that are uh, a homeowner and contractor need to go through when you don't have the process.
You didn't give roads till you educated the people. So it's, it's not just us figuring out how, what this should look like. It's then the public hearings of educating the public.
So in that sentence where it says, other examples not requiring permits according to the code include, you should put include but are not limited to.
I thought it said.
No.
One, one of the famous hangups, Joe, as you know, in the trade is insulators come in and they usually insulate a house more or less in a day. And that's the issue with having a building inspector that works one day a week or a half day a week. I mean, he works Tuesday and I have it insulated Tuesday. I want an inspection Wednesday. He can't come till the following Tuesday. You, you've lost a week of your schedule with the house sitting there, you know, crying for sheet rock. That's why we have to have them available.
And you know, my, my, my plan as far as with the building inspector goes, you know, obviously with 18 to 20 hours, he's going to definitely be available and there's going to be office time that he's going to have. So that if contractors, if the public need to come in and see him, they're going to know, whatever day, let's just say Monday's from nine to 11, he's in the office. It gives the people the opportunity to come in, ask questions and actually, and deal with the person as opposed to playing phone tag, playing email tag, you know, to have, be able to come in and actually know they're there and be able to talk to them.
And, and you know, a lot of the towns, the inspectors will allow photos of um, you know, insulation, something like that, footing, sonotubes. I mean, not usually rough inspections, but some of the, some of the more straightforward things.
Yep.
Technology.
The towns that are really easy to deal with too will also have their building inspector, but they'll also have another qualified individual in the background that can take up the pressure and get there in a timely fashion. And um, I've run into that a lot with masonry inspection. In fact, it was Bo, that there was three different people in town that could drop over. Because of course, you know, masonry with fighting weather and everything, once you get outside, you know, you're only allowed to go 10 feet. You know, you're only allowed to go 10 feet and between your inspections. And I mean, I stayed in that town for years doing masonry because I tell you, all you had to do was call and out, out of the day, one of those three people would appear. They had a little bit of a backup.
Well, we kind of, we kind of drifted away from the, from the permits not required. I, I agree with what Tia said. The other examples not requiring permits according to the code include but are not limited to. It's a very easy thing to put in.
Anybody else?
Want to get together in two weeks? One more gander?
I think we auto.
Okay, I'll get it posted up and.
We'll have the fee structure too.
So just so, my, my plan is the selectmen are meeting on the 15th. After our meeting on Friday, I'll make any changes that come out of the working group and we'll re-present again to the selectmen on the 15th so that they can get another look at this with the recommendations that have come out of here with the working group and then with the fee structure. So then you guys will have another workable document on the 23rd.
Okay, I'll post it and obviously get you guys a new packet when, after the mid, the subcommittee meets and makes any changes, so.
I'll make sure you have a workable link as well for everybody.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
I don't think you'll want me on the night I have another problem connecting up.
Then have a little powwow tomorrow morning with some people, so.
Well, it's as simple as sending the link through a normal email. The minute you put things in a PDF, they're not active.
I know, I know.
Unless you're converting it from the document into a PDF, then it becomes active, but not scanning the material.
Undeciphered versions, you know, it won't even let you edit, edit that PDF that comes in. So you can't even copy and paste it. You can't do it. I know I tried it all.
You showed up, so it's all good.
Yeah, well, Mark took care of that problem. Anything else we can hash around or we all set?
I think we're good.
Well.
Just need a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
And everybody better approve on my picture list.
I'm just going to shut, I'm just going to shut you all off, so.
Bye guys.
Thank you.
See you in the morning, Joe.
See you.
Right early.